I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, March 27, 2017.
And the time is 7:00 PM. Thanks Noel. Dr. Hillman, there were just one, there was just one item in the table file.
That's very unusual. We only have one item in the table file and it's surrounding our proposed work session for April 19.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, March 13, 2017. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? So moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. Any discussion regarding the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, March 13, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Hillman, announcements and recognitions.
In a similar fashion to the table file, we're coming back from spring break today for our teaching staff and tomorrow for our students, so we have one announcement, which is that you are invited to the 13th Annual Beyond Words Program, which is a Sibley Schoolwide Celebration of Art and Literacy, and that will take place from 5:00 to 7:30 PM on Thursday, April 6. Then if you want to come listen to me read at Camp Caldecott, I'm on at 5:00 PM, and you could even have a potential suggestion about what book I read. So, and of course, Greenville Park and Bridgewater also do similar kinds of events, Bridgewater's Learning Fair and Greenville Park's Evening with the Arts. So those things are coming up and we'll be letting you know as they are scheduled.
Excellent. Is there anything anyone would like to add? Okay. We will move on. As the second meeting of the month, we have committee reports. That's the opportunity for board members to give a brief update on the different various school board, or various committees in which their school board liaison. We didn't have any formally submitted, and I have to admit, spring break must have been in my mind because I didn't provide a committee report for the C Regional Meeting, which Dr. Hillman and I attended on Monday, March 20. So I would like to just share a couple of quick legislative updates. I know as board members, we do have, likely that you get the email from Schools for Equity and Education every Friday. So what we learned at the regional meeting is there's, obviously, the legislative process is continuing to move forward. We were waiting anxiously for the House and the Senate to set their education targets. The governor had set his at 600 million and then went and doubled down on early childhood and added 100 million. So just for frame of reference, the 2 and 2% on the formula that we have felt like was the minimum that we would find acceptable would actually cost the state 371 million. So disappointing to see the House come in at 258 million and the Senate came in at 350 million. So that's the target dollar amount that they're willing to spend out of the $1.6 billion surplus. So some source of frustration there. We hope that the negotiation process continues in those targets, targets increase. We were able to see a little bit of what the House was doing with their 258 million. Again, 371 million just to do 2 and 2. They are actually at 1.5 and 1.5 on the basic formula increase. So disappointing there. Eliminating voluntary pre-K, which was 47 million. So they really eliminated a lot of things. Eliminate early learning pathway two scholarships, which we know is so important to our district. Some school readiness funding was cut, you know, various other aspects of the funding formula where we get some additional dollars have all been cut. So disappointing for sure, and we will watch the legislative process as it moves forward. Brad Lindell, Executive Director of Schools for Equity and Education, obviously lots of negotiation left and he, to happen, and he's there really speaking with legislators and helping them to understand how important 2 and 2% is. Interesting to note that he felt like it could come down to special session, which is surprising. So because many of those legislators were adamant that there wouldn't be last minute, behind the door, closed doors type of negotiating, but we'll see how that happens, but it's not outside the realm of possibility that they won't end in May, but rather go into special sessions. So that's just an update on what's happening at the legislative. Yeah, Margaret.
Julie, could you provide some of those talking points in an email to me or to anybody else? I would like to write to our representatives in the state government and...
Yeah, that would be excellent. I'm not sure, are you on the Schools for Equity and Education?
I get it periodically.
Okay. Yeah, I will definitely send you the link as well, because if you get on to Deb Griffith, who's the communications outreach person, not only does she send these really informative Friday updates, but to your point, you get action alerts. And so that's, that's really where she is saying, here's something we really need to move on. And so if you have the opportunity and board members to respond to that, I know that Dr. Hillman had responded to the long-term facilities maintenance when they felt like they wanted to maybe grab some funds out of there. And because there was so much response, we feel like they're backing off of long-term facility fund money. Disheartening that they feel like that's the low-hanging fruit to grab at this point, but we feel like because of the, the action alert and the response that it got. But I appreciated Dr. Hillman sending a very detailed email to a number of legislators talking about how that was particularly important funding and that we, case in point, was the Bridgewater move. So I absolutely appreciate that, that question and the action alerts are really important.
I think too, if you want a good source for talking points, is if you look at Brad's blog, which is the Executive Director Brad Lindell's blog, he's been updating it a few times a week, and he just updated it last night again with very much of the same detail that Julie has shared today, with some additional insights that he has had after reflecting over the weekend. So I think if you, you could just use Google at Brad's blog, C, S-E-E, and then I think you're in good shape to get that. So he provides some real good detail about, and objective, you know, in terms of, you know, what the different caucuses are talking about, how it could impact us as low-property wealth districts, and really gives an excellent, we get a number of legislative updates each week from a number of different organizations, and I really appreciate Brad's analysis of what's happening at the Capitol. I think it's very nuanced, it's experienced, and I think it's probably some of the better analysis we get.
Okay, wonderful. One, one point on the action alerts too, to your point, Margaret, is Deb usually drafts suggested emails so that the language is already there, and you can just kind of, you know, either verbatim or just kind of have some thought starters and put in your own. So she understands that it's really important that you jump on it and that if you have to sit and think about what you need to write and what the, you know, key points are, she does draft a number of different letters for you to just respond.
I haven't seen an update in quite a while from C.
You might want to check your spam.
Yes, you may want to do that. Any other questions? Okay. All right, well, we'll hopefully, it's a little disheartening in that what we were hearing and what we heard when Amy Gorwitz and I were at the Capitol for our C Day at the Capitol, that feeling like 2 and 2% was going to happen, and now we see something significantly less than that, so we'll...
And we should point out that Brad had said he was very confident that we would get to 2 and 2, you know, in terms of, because he's explained how that process goes. So I think we should just really make clear that, you know, that 2% and 2% is barely an inflationary increase. I mean, I struggle to even call it an inflationary increase, but I think we would all say 2 and 2 is, is better than what we've gotten in many years. So I think Brad is confident through the negotiation process that we will probably get there. However, we have all seen a number of times, or even one week before the session ended, we had some real confidence in something that all of a sudden changed as they bring things to the final closure, and if we end up with a special session, all bets are off there as well. So we encourage you to keep looking at things, to making sure that you're reviewing the C blog, and MSBA also puts out some good information, because what we have learned is that volume does make a difference. And so if there's a particular issue that you are passionate about, making sure that you contact folks. If enough people contact them, as we did with the long-term facilities maintenance revenue piece, we know that it can make a difference in those deliberations. They're now to the point where the omnibus bills are close to being done and drafted, so it's going to be even more important that we pay attention as these things come to the final dates.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We'll move forward then with our first item for discussion. We have Director of Technology Services Kim Briskie provided an overview, information in your packets.
All right. Good evening. So I am here to talk tonight about staff computer replacement, which we started at the last board meeting, just a little bit with Val and the capital budget process. So from that presentation and the thoughts that were shared about computers, I think you know already that we're looking at replacing a significant number of staff computers this year, and based on that need, began to investigate a laptop lease of MacBook Pros. And so I'll take you through this presentation and definitely have some time for questions as well. So I just want to start out with the why. You're pretty familiar with me being here and starting with our mission statement and this year, our strategic plan, and I'm starting with the why is this year different? And one of those differences is the strategic plan. And then if you look at that, you see that the, there is the near-term priority for spaces that are modern, innovative, creative, and flexible. And this is one of those things that would move us towards that. So as I said, a large number of staff computer replacements are needed this year. That includes 30 iMac desktops at the middle school and 115 PC desktops that's across the district. It could be in offices or in classrooms. That does not include any student machines or lab machines. It is just staff computer replacements. Like that third point says, it includes licensed and non-licensed staff computer replacements. So we're looking to replace licensed staff computers with a new lease, and that lease would be of MacBook Pro laptops like what you see right here. So then the next question is why a MacBook Pro lease? And the first point that I'm going to give, there is a little graph in your packet, it's probably a little bit difficult to see, is that there's, there are two of them actually. A strong preference among district licensed staff for both Mac and laptops. And so this first graph, and I think just based on chatting with Julie this morning, it's a slight bit different than, than yours. I think yours has one longer bar that just represents a green one that represents all responses, and that's removed in this one. So the other ones are the same, but there's no green bar that has the total response on this, on this chart. So if you look at the full district on the top there, you can see that 96 people who responded to this survey, and this is licensed staff, said that they prefer a laptop, and 42 people said that they prefer a desktop, and another 20 said that they have no preference between a desktop or a laptop. You can see that that kind of trend goes down through each, each building with the exception of the middle school, where you see the third set of lines there, where the middle school has 27 licensed staff that prefer a desktop, and 14 prefer a laptop, and six who said no preference. So this is out of, I believe, 158 on the total respondents. And then a similar chart on the next one. This one asked the question, you prefer a Mac, prefer Windows, or no preference? And you see a kind of similar kind of breakdown if you look at the full district. We had 89 people respond, they prefer a Mac. 37 people responded that they prefer Windows, and 32 responded that they have no preference. And so those are the numbers that said, yep, people are, people are ready to move, and we need to be able to support those who are maybe not quite ready to move. So just to reiterate where these numbers came from, I think we mentioned that at the last meeting, this was a series of meetings that I did with each of our building's staff. So we went to District Tech Steering and discussed this possibility. First of all, secured funding to, to have a choice between replacing desktop computers as we have them now, or beginning a lease that would cover all licensed staff. If we do that lease, which is what we're looking to do, we would then move some of the newer desktops that don't need replacing yet into those non-licensed staff areas that do need replacing. So that started with District Tech Steering in that conversation, then went to the Capitol program to secure the funding to do either/or on the replacement, and then back to District Tech Steering with a plan to email all staff, all licensed staff that is, and spend a full day in each of their buildings. So I spent a day in each school, did a meeting that was, in some cases, a staff meeting, in some cases, an optional meeting for, for staff to attend with information about what this would look like. And then the survey was sent to licensed staff at least twice in each building. So each building, a meeting, full day, and an opportunity to respond to the survey twice. So that's how we got those 158 responses. So like I said, strong preference among district licensed staff for both Mac and for laptops. The other reasons to go for a MacBook Pro lease is that the MacBook Pro allows really great integration with our iPads. So we already have iPads in place. The efficiency of working with an iPad and with a Mac is pretty exceptional. As an example, I was off the grid completely over spring break, but when I came back to service, I did a little touch up on this presentation, was able to, with my laptop, touch up some of what I had already created with my, with my, or with my iPad, I was able to touch up my presentation, do the work that I needed to do, but have something that was very portable. And also, it's not enough on the iPad to do all of the charts and the graphs with Excel spreadsheets and insert them into your presentation, but once they're there, manipulating them is no problem. And so that sort of work together piece is very helpful. Lots of pieces that streamline what an iPad and a Mac can do together, including teachers creating content in iBooks for their classes, where really, this is the kind of curriculum that in a dream world, we would have the materials in front of our kids that are exactly what we have identified as the power standards that we need to meet and have exactly the materials that we have, you know, called out and determined are the best for our kids. And we can do that. So that's kind of a cool piece. These laptops would be pretty robust, faster, more storage than any of the current desktops we have, so there's not a concern with the performance of a, of a laptop versus a desktop here. User-friendly management, and this is coming down to Casper. That's what we use to manage our iPads. It's what shuts them down if they're stolen and puts a little message that says, return this to the Northfield Schools if you find it. It's what distributes apps to each of the individual users that need them, and so we can set up groups. We can make a lot of this process automated so that an end user opens up their machine and has what they need, and we're able to manage that on the backend wirelessly, which is excellent. The availability of ongoing support and extended warranty. We haven't in the past purchased an extended warranty. I did include this in this lease proposal, that would be Apple Care for three years on the MacBook, so it would cover any sort of damage or malfunction of the machines. Not damage that we inflict on the machines, but anything that were, to stop functioning, like a battery, or any issues with the screen, or anything like that. With that support also comes how-to support for any of the Apple programs and the integration of iPad and, and Mac, including onsite professional development. The other thing that this allows for is a transition to wireless projecting. The two top requests that I heard from our staff this year for capital requests were functioning computers and a better solution for wirelessly projecting in order to get your iPad to project, or students' iPads to project wirelessly and reliably. We can do that with an Apple TV, and an Apple TV would work with a Mac, it would work with a PC, but you'd have to purchase something to make it work. So this, this is a way to kind of streamline how we project and present material and move beyond our, our current wiring, which is starting to be outdated and starting to also be, the next request we get is, can I move my desk? And right now, we are pretty tethered to wherever those inputs are, and we could maybe get beyond that. The final point here is that it's cost-effective. I will say it is more expensive to go with laptops, and Macs are more expensive than PCs. The reason I'm, I'm putting in a cost-effectiveness here is the need for a significant purchase of computers already that would cover a portion of our staff. This is more expensive than that, and it is a year-over-year expense. At the same time, historically, Macs do retain their value, and so we would own the, own the computers at the end of the lease and be able to resell them, or opt out of the lease for a new lease and use the value to leverage against a new lease. And so what that gets us is the ability to update our computers more frequently than we have in the past. It puts us on a, on a consistent cycle of how we spend for our staff computers and, and lets us leverage the value of them at the end. So what are some of the challenges? There are challenges, and I know there will be challenges that I have not yet thought of. I'm trying my best to think of them ahead of time and to, to work with others to find them. This is change, and change is hard for a lot of people. And so there is change management and support from our tech team, of course, for, for all, based on the needs that they will have, because while we had more people, more than twice as many people that responded to the survey say they wanted a laptop than a desktop, and we had more than twice as many respondents say they wanted a Mac than a PC, there are still others that don't want this. And there's some reasons to go, I think, full scale here, which I can talk about, but that does also, also mean that we have some changes coming where people will need some support in moving from PC to a Mac. We can do this. I've seen it done before. Danita has seen it done before. We can, we can make it work. But we, we will need to work, work at that a little bit. Movement of many devices, this would be a, a new device for every licensed staff person, so that would be moving all of the current licensed staff desktops out and maybe redistributing some of those to office staff, to EAs, maybe to special ed student computers, some of that adjustment of machines, and then setting up and distributing laptops to all staff. And then I think there's a change in how we work in order to find a workflow that maximizes productivity and effectiveness on a new device, at a device that has the portability that a laptop has. So that's, that's a lot to manage all at one time. We're up for the, the challenge of it, but there will be some challenge. Device setup, that's the deployment, thinking of how people use them. I have heard some concerns about screen size. I have heard some concerns about a mouse and a keyboard. I've heard some concerns about having a disk drive where I need to plug in 18 peripheral items to, to my computer to use a smart board and to use a wireless, you know, Bluetooth connection calculator set and to use the disk drive and to use whatever. And can we make all of that work? So that, determining the setup that each of our teachers need and making sure that we can get that for them would be a top priority, of course. So there's that need for different peripherals and, and the preference to use it like a desktop. So this one I set up here is an actual, this is the exact computer that we would get. That computer right now works with this monitor, with this mouse and with this keyboard. It has power and everything plugged into it. It would require two plugins from the teacher when they get here in the morning if they were to take it home at night. And that's just with the adapters that, that we connected to that one. It works with that monitor being an extended display or a mirror of what is on the screen, and it also works with the, the laptop completely closed and just slid underneath the monitor for more space, and then it just works exactly like a desktop. So we can do that for people. And so if that is what the, and this is just a monitor that I swiped from a computer lab. So this is an existing monitor, keyboard, and mouse, which we have many in the district. The next is compatibility of software. There's very few pieces of software that I know of that we would have any, actually, I don't know of any that we would have any issue with. I know that there might be some out there that we find out about, and that is why we put in the budget some incidentals for the first year of going, oh, we didn't realize that one teacher was using a program that wouldn't run on the Mac, and we have to find a different option or a Mac version, and we need to purchase it. And so some of those kind of smaller things, I think we've got the big ones down, but I do anticipate that there will be some things that we didn't foresee. And then training for the tech team, we haven't managed these before, so while we're very confident that we can, we haven't done it. And so there is a lot of learning that needs to go on for our technology team in order to bring in devices and distribute them well and make sure that the end user experience for the person who pulls it out of a box and opens it up and gets all the things that they need, that they actually do get all of the things that they need. So we would start training for our tech team pretty quickly upon approval of a lease. So those are some of the challenges, but what are some of the benefits? First of all, just the innovative and efficient practice. So when we think about our district and the collaboration that we're doing either between buildings or grade levels, or between departments in our secondaries, or as a full department in our, in our secondaries, the ability for our teachers to have their machine as they have it set up with all of their bookmarks, with everything they like in the same places, I think is pretty exceptional whenever you're working anywhere in the district. The flexible grouping in spaces, we're not really there yet on having flexible learning spaces, but it's one of our near-term priorities. And can we have the computers that are ready to pull into a space like this media center and set up a presentation space on the fly? I think we could do that. And then easy access to files and programs, just think of wherever you are, at a professional development event, whether it's onsite, offsite, doing PLC work, you need the PLC minutes, you can do that on your iPad. I can type on my iPad, and there are times when I think it's the best tool. I can type better on my laptop. There are times when I think that is the most productive tool, and I think for many of our teachers, that would be the case. More frequent and consistent updating of devices, I mentioned that lease cycle ending after four years and having the ability to re-up. The computers that we're looking to replace, if we were just replacing desktops this year, are from 2009 and 2010, so they're old. They're ready to be replaced. We have to do something. And it's not because we haven't cared, they've been working. But can we give our teachers a more frequent update of, of their equipment so that they stay on that front edge? I would really like that. And then that consistency in the budget for staff computers as well. Oops. Went backwards. So what does the lease look like? This is what I've put in the initial lease documents, 350 MacBook Pros that would cover all licensed staff individuals, not just FTE, so that's our part-timers as well. 350 adapters that plug into a monitor or a projector. 40 MacBook Airs, that would be for substitute teachers who still need things like Smart Notebook or something like that on their computer when they come in to teach, and a teacher has their laptop at home, that we would have some computers in each of our buildings available. I did some work with our HR department to verify that that would cover what we need for substitute teachers on a regular basis. Apple Care is that extended warranty. 125 Apple TVs, let me tell you that these are not actually TVs, they're a little black box that allow for that wireless connection to the projector. We don't have enough projectors that are ready for an Apple TV at this point, but we could get to 125 in a year. The Casper Jump Start, that's to get our tech team started with managing these. Casper Management licenses for each of these computers, and the total cost of that is $618,000, well, $619,000 just about, coming out to $157,000 over four years. And then what would implementation look like? So let's say we go ahead with this lease, what's next? Finalize the lease in April, that's coming at the next meeting. Begin the Casper training and certification for our tech team. We would purchase a Casper Training Pass, which allows all of our tech team unlimited access to Casper training. Thankfully, they're located in Minneapolis, which is a big benefit to us. They offer certifications for our tech team, which is also a really great opportunity for, for them as individuals to, to kind of bolster their career, I think, to get certified with Casper Management and Casper Administration. We would likely receive the equipment before the end of the school year. We would be able to test the setup process and how would it function, just like we have done with iPad distribution and such, and be setting up training materials so that there would be some available online and then some available through the summer learning series as well. We would begin deploying as soon as we can, so as soon as teachers, I have already had teachers ask, can I get one now? No, is the answer there. We do have five like this that we can set up in our schools so that people could see what it looks like. They just, just came in, so I set this one up today. So we will get some that people can see and feel and ask questions and go, how would this work? That we could put in a classroom and connect and see, can we get everything working? But we would want to get them out to people who are ready to go with them. We are not going to start pulling desktops anytime before the end of the school year at, at this point, though. There would be laptops set up and training for all licensed staff throughout the summer learning series and at fall workshops. So we have, I believe it's June 20th and 21st, and August 15th and 16th set up for summer learning series right now. We will add the weekly Tuesday sessions for moving forward with this lease, so that we have multiple opportunities for our staff to come in and get training on using a Mac or on writing iBooks or on the, the use of iPad and Mac together, anything that, you know, we'll put together some sessions that would fit multiple levels of experience. And we will offer an opportunity for paid training for licensed staff during that summer learning series, likely up to four hours per person if they would like to, an optional paid training. So that's the information part, and now I'll look to you for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you for the excellent presentation. Board members, questions, comments? Margaret?
I think this is really exciting because I, this is how the world works now, not just the future. So many businesses are moving toward flexible office space, and people almost don't even have their own office anymore. They're taking their laptops with them for groupings and meetings. groupings and meetings. One question I have was, this is how I'm going to show my age here. I was always raised on, you know, it's better to buy than rent, and it's better to buy than to lease. So I have a tough time kind of getting around that idea that leasing is a better idea for us. So what you're saying is with this lease deal, it's a four-year cycle, so if technology explodes in four years, we've got an option to renew without being stuck with these obsolete laptops, and that it comes with warranty and training. So that's what makes it a better, more cost-effective deal.
We can purchase the warranty and the training and purchase it all upfront. We don't have $620,000 in our capital budget for a year to go and make a purchase like this. So we could also say, let's go ahead and purchase, you know, 75 laptops to start us out. The leasing gives us that opportunity to make the entire shift, and I did say I was going to mention that a little bit more. With that middle school response, I did do some extensive conversation with Greg Delano and with Michael Keith. Amy Sieve and I have talked a bit about that. The question there is, do you want to move forward with laptops? Now, the rest of the district is looking like, yes, we want to move forward. And Greg's response to me was, we want to be moving forward. We're the only school that is not responding this way right now, and we have the opportunity to do something like this where it looks and acts like a desktop when we purchase or lease laptops. We don't have the option to go the other way. So if we were to say, let's go laptops, or let's go desktops, we can't let people use it like a laptop. We can let people use a laptop like a desktop. So we can help with that. Then the next thing is, if you, the other question is, how much choice on the individual level are we able and willing to manage? And so you could say, all right, some teachers would prefer a desktop, some would prefer a laptop. Let's go ahead and do that. Well, as staff starts to change, then we don't have necessarily that choice. And yes, new teachers could move in and take what is there. That's what's happened in the past. You get what is there. But it would be different from others, and a little bit more to manage in that sense. And we would lose that ability to know that every staff person has the ability to have their computer with them at a professional development. And so that, I think, is the huge win with being able to go everybody all at once, is that we get that benefit of saying, bring your laptop, and we know everybody can access anything that they need for their position when we're working at a meeting or at a training.
Yeah, I think that, I think it's a great idea. I just don't see anything with it. But time for one more question?
Can I just, can I share one thing, Margaret? I agree with you in terms of the old concept of leasing, you know, that has always been drilled into us, people of our vintage, you know, better to lease than buy, but we also have to, or buy, excuse me. But I think the key thing is that one of the benefits of real low interest rates, you see here, we have a very low interest rate of 1.25%. That, I think, has been able to change that market for schools. And if you think about a lot of our big projects, so for example, you think about the Sibley addition, pretty big project, right? The fact is, that was, we actually do that as a lease purchase, if I'm correct. And so the fact is that I'm looking at technology continuing to move forward as part of our district infrastructure, along with roofs and along with building pieces and curriculum and all those other things. And when we can put a lease on a more predictable schedule, so that we're not having, just like, it's not the world's best analogy, but if you think about, one of the reasons we did our self-funded health insurance was to minimize the swings that we would see in premiums. Kim is sharing about 180 computers should be our seven years or older. Talk to many business folks who have seven-plus-year computers on their staff members' desks. The fact is that you can meter that payment out in a predictable manner, and we know that we're going to be able to keep relatively current. And I think that's an important investment in our staff to say, as you move forward, we know that that kind of technology is very important to the work that you do. We're going to plan for it, just like we do other planned things, like roofs and small building additions like we did with the Sibley piece. And we're going to use, remember, this is capital dollars, so we're going to use our capital dollars to do it. It's not going to affect the general fund in the way you think it would normally affect the general fund. So I think that that's a couple of key pieces of how leases, in my mind, have changed over the years.
Yep. And I totally agree, just sometimes making that hurdle. My other question is, do you feel like you have enough FTE and the information technology staff to manage this convergence, this transition?
Yep. I think we've done a couple of big ones, just to test our strength. I would call Gmail being one of them, and that was a large shift for people. I think I've heard Mr. Hillman say things like, you know how to, you know how much people can handle when you mess with their email. There are ways to get right to the heart of things.
Email and gradebook are the two.
Email and gradebook are pretty big. So that Gmail transition was a pretty big one in terms of just training time for staff and the actual shift over. Our team, I can't say enough about how much they're doing and how well they're doing. You know, going above and beyond in terms of saying, hey, I have a little time right now to look into something and researching, how can we shorten our usernames and passwords for our elementary kids that might have really long last names? And this is, this is not just a piece that gets at something that's convenient, but it's a piece that gets at equity, because our kids who have really long last names are our Hispanic students, and they're saying, we need to be able to help with this. And that's self-initiated, which I am proud of, our team for that. And so I think this, like any other piece, they will take and they will learn. We have time to learn what we need to learn before we have to deploy devices. We have learned to manage iPads and distributed thousands of iPads and learned to do that without knowing. And we hear the, we know it can work. We know it can work, and that's all we need in order to figure out how to make it work. And so I think you get, that can be uneasy, but I have a very high level of confidence in our team.
And Margaret, I would also just share that, you know, if you think about it, when you go back to the start of when we implemented iPads, we have the same number of technical staff now that we did then. And if you think about that feat that was accomplished, distributing thousands of iPads and staying with roughly, very close to the same, I think it's the exact number of technicians that we started with that are here today. One of the pieces, you know, without getting too much into the technical details that Kim has kept at a high level, is that the Casper Management System will actually, I think, save the technology team time over the years. Normally, you'll see when new computers are delivered, there's this mass effort of staging them and imaging them and all of these kinds of things that takes literally weeks of the summer. And with the Casper system, because of the way that Apple works with that system, those serial numbers will generally be preloaded into the system, so it's what they call a zero-touch configuration, where you take it out of the box, you open it up, and it says, oh, you're part of Northfield Schools. I know what to do for you. You plug in your credentials, and now it knows, oh, you work at Northfield High School, so you get this stuff. And the downloads begin automatically. In theory, that's how it's supposed to work. And we've seen it work that way with iPads, because it's the same exact strategy. So from the question I'm hearing you say about workload of our tech staff, I actually think after the initial learning curve, this is going to save them significant time. And this is not, for people who have set these things up over the years, this is not a small deal.
Yeah, it's a new mindset in the management of machines as well. The way that we've managed computers up until now is that there's a kind of a base image that goes on to each of the computers, and that image contains every piece of software and, you know, the right version of everything for that computer, but any other computer needs its own image. And so there are multiple images based on the type of computer that people have, and I don't even know how many images we have created, but dozens. And each of those, to update an image is updating each piece of software, including internet browsers and Java and Flash and everything, and then reimaging all of those computers. And we're moving to a system that is a, deploy a package of an app, kind of. And so Microsoft Office goes out to everyone, and then Microsoft Office updates, and it just updates for everyone. We don't need a new image. It's amazing.
Well, I just want to thank you. This sounds very well thought out and very, just very well thought out, and I'm very excited about the prospect.
Thank you.
Excellent. Amy, I think you had your hand first.
So I have a couple of questions. I guess, my first question is, how does the cost over four years compare to what we have sort of been thinking in the budget? You said it was more expensive, but what does that mean?
Yeah. So I looked ahead to the next couple of years, because like I said, we need about 145 new staff computers this year. Next year, we need about 75. The year after, now I'm going to have to test my memory a little bit more than I like to, but right around 100 again. And so we would be looking at about $130,000 this year, a little less next year. So we are paying more. The idea of leveraging the value is that we should be able to leverage a full year cost of the lease to get back after it's over. So I kind of, what I did to figure that is I quoted a resale of a 2012 MacBook Pro at this point in time, and we could get $400 for that. We sold back a handful of iPads that we had purchased to supplement the iPad 2s, the last model of iPads that we used, and they gave us a maximum of $70 per, and we ended up coming out pretty high. And what they rated the condition on, and those iPads, it wasn't a lot of iPads, but a way to test out this resale, this resale piece. And with that company is where we could get $400 for a 2012 MacBook Pro. And so thinking about, okay, what do we do with a 2017 MacBook Pro when it's 2021? Consistently, they have had residual value, so that's a good thing.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be curious if, as we proceed, to sort of have more of a sense of...
More of a comparison?
Yeah. But then my next question is, and I'm a believer in technology, and I'm a believer in getting our faculty and staff, everybody, to have the tools that they need to be able to do their job well. I think that's important. So actually, I too am excited that you're thinking outside the box and thinking creatively. But I look at all the information, and I keep hearing about, you know, this is what we, you know, sort of throwing the iPads in there and talking about the iPads. And I'm just wondering, since I'm new to the board, all the teachers already have iPads, and they're taking their iPads and doing things with them. And they also have desktops from before they had iPads, to some extent, that was a holdover. Does, do all the teachers need, and would they use? And I know it varies from teacher to teacher, but both the iPad and a laptop slash desktop at their fingertips right there when the teachers are mostly teaching. So I come from an administrative background. When I would go to work, I'd sit and type on the computer all day long. And I'm wondering if the teachers are all going to be using these rental leased computers, that, how heavily, how much they would actually use them? And I look at also how many people didn't even respond or said, when they responded, they didn't have a preference. And it made me wonder, maybe that's because they're not actually using what they have very much.
With confidence, I can say that every licensed staff person is using their computer every single day they work, and so this would be their new computer. And so I can say with confidence they would use their laptop every single day that they are working. Would they use it portably? I don't know. I don't know. I think most would. That's a guess on my part.
Would they, would they need both the laptop and the iPad? I know the iPad goes with what all the students have, but could some of them just have an iPad with a keyboard attached to it?
No. I think the iPad is a really great tool for a lot of things. And so it's not a tool to use for everything. So you can't install the same kind of software on an iPad that you can install on a computer. So things like Microsoft Office, there is Office 365, and you can get to it. There is Google Drive on the iPad. Like I said, I used it on my iPad. But I used it to manipulate something that I was able to create on my desktop, like even something like the slide background that has the Northfield Public Schools logo on it. I need my desktop for that and to insert it. And it's a simple thing. The teachers would not have a robust enough tool with just their iPad. Now, for making something like a video, which we are seeing more and more use of kinds of multimedia and communication of images and a video and of being able to label pieces, being able to use the touchscreen to draw, and then transfer that over to your computer and insert a drawing into something that you are making, and you can actually get a great drawing using your iPad. That's where the two work really well together. So if I'm at a conference, I will, like I say, I type better on my laptop. But I can type well enough on my iPad, and then I have the benefit of being able to quick snap a photo of an image on a screen and slide it right into my notes that I don't have easily from just my laptop. And so there's a time and a place for each of them. I think the more often-used tool would be the computer. And then the iPad, I think, is still very much necessary to, one, be able to use it for those kinds of multimedia pieces, that it's, you need that camera. I think the camera and the settings apps are actually the two most valuable apps on our iPads. But also to be able to see what your students are seeing, to be able to see how schoolology feels when a student accesses something, to be able to test something for a student, to be able to author an iBook and then put it to your iPad and make sure that it works, all of those pieces. I think our teachers would need both tools.
Thank you.
Ellen?
So first, I'm really appreciative of your response to Margaret about the docking sort of setup and the demonstration of it, because one concern I would have was that by doing this, I wouldn't want to set the message that we know how hard the teachers work, that we're saying, well, now we're giving you a computer that you should be working on, you know, wherever you are. I like the fact that if we have this docking set up, that, you know, that isn't an expectation. It's just a tool that if they want to be flexible, it gives them that flexibility. The question I have, and this has probably helped me understand that I'm probably getting confused, so it's about, half of the machines are really, really old, and we would be replacing anyway, and then about half are okay, and those might go to EAs and might be student machines in the room and things like that? Is that right?
The ones that we would keep are things that have been replaced in the last year or two, and those would go to office staff who have some of those computers that are from seven years ago. So now they would have a good, highly functioning machine, and they need a replacement anyway, and we have enough on hand to be able to do that. We would not be putting anything that is more than four, actually, even four years old. We would not be repurposing to an office staff. We might use those as spares in case somebody had a catastrophe and needed something.
Okay. So that was, I guess, the two questions I had with that, trying to think through that, is if we were ended up with lots of old machines in the field, because they were extra and we could just use them, that I was worried about taxing the tech staff that you have with these continuing to use, and it sounds like that's not the case.
Many machines would leave the district.
Okay. And then when they leave, is that part of the cost? Like, I know when we have to get rid of things at our house, that like that, it costs money to get rid of them. Is that included?
We actually don't need to pay for electronics recycling.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Great questions.
Can I emphasize one more thing on the expectation of taking your laptop and working wherever you are? I want to be very clear that that is not the expectation with something like that. The benefit comes from the flexibility to be able to meet together, to work wherever we are, to access our files wherever we are, to have fluidity between moving between rooms in a building. If people take them home and work on them, that's their choice. I think we hear that people do put in a lot of hours. I know our teachers are hard workers. I'm not looking to add to their load by any means.
Thank you.
Again, excellent questions. Other questions or comments? Noel?
I want to thank you for your presentation. It's very excellent. But I want to preface my comments by saying I'm supportive of making sure we provide the teachers with the latest equipment that provides the tools they need as well as being equipped.
Noel, excuse me. Could you bring the microphone? We want to be sure that we capture your comment.
I want to preface my comments by saying I'm supportive of what you're doing and what the district is proposing, but also want to, and to provide the teachers with the equipment and tools that they need to be efficient. But also want to respond to the questions I might get on the street or in the restaurant that says, what's the impact of delaying this one year?
The impact of a one-year delay is that we need to buy the 115 computers that need replacement at this point in time, and then we will end up next year having those 115 computers in place and in really good working condition with no, not really any good reason to make a full-scale change to laptops. Right now, we have a place to put the existing computers and to use them well. We wouldn't have that if we were to purchase the significant number that we need this year.
And Noel, you can, Kim and several other people have asked for years, could we consider a laptop? And my answer, and it was generally my responsibility at that point to say, I don't think we can make it work, for a number of different reasons, of which Kim had... make it work, for a number of different reasons, of which Kim has just highlighted a couple. But I think one of the answer for the people on the street is that timing is a lot of things, right? And the timing works right now where it is the most cost-effective way to be able to make an organizational wide shift because of the computers that are at the end of their life cycle, of usable life cycle for us and moving forward. So I think one of the key pieces is that we have the timing of it in terms of the machines that are up. We have the ability to enter into a lease that will meter that payment so that it's a more predictable piece for us and not get us in this position again where we have these unusually large years.
Good. Thank you. I have one more.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Will we provide the equipment to the subs also?
Yes, we would need a solution for subs. One of the biggest questions that came up in that survey was, what happens if I am sick and have my computer at home? Do I have to run it in? No. We would not expect somebody who is sick to come here and bring equipment for a sub to use. There are multiple devices, I think, that could work for a substitute teacher. We could use an iPad to be able to show content. We could use a Chromebook to show content. We cannot use an iPad or a Chromebook if they need access to a smart notebook file or a Microsoft Office file. And so those are the pieces that say, we need to make sure that our teachers have the flexibility to leave the best possible plans for what is going on in their classroom with their students and have a device that is functional for that substitute teacher. And so, yep, we put in MacBook Airs, a little bit lower-cost laptop for substitute teachers.
And let's be clear, the substitutes don't have them full-time.
No.
There would be an allotment per building that would be checked out to the substitute at the beginning of the day and checked in at the end of the day. I just didn't want people to think that we'd be issuing a computer for full-time for... Now, our full-time substitutes, the two that we...
I think they should have one.
They would probably have their own, you know, in terms of that. But the substitute who is working in several different buildings on a more casual basis, they would check one out from the building in the morning, and they would check it back in the afternoon.
You answered the question that I didn't ask. And that's why you're there, and I'm over here.
Something like that.
Again, really great questions. Other board members have questions, or those... Jeff?
I remember a long time ago when we looked at this, even when it was Android versus Mac. I'm just wondering, what has happened in the last, as far as percentages? Has Mac really dominated that market, or is it an 80/20? Or, I mean...
I would be guessing at market share. And I've looked a little bit at market share overall. No, Mac is not even anywhere near reaching the level of PC saturation in the market. In education?
Right.
More likely so. I would guess that Mac has overtaken PC in the education market. But that is a guess. Let me clarify that.
I just think that, you know, you want, you know, whether it's Android or Mac, you want things to be compatible and work as best functioning as you can, because some people are used to one and the other. I mean, if one dominates as far as popular use, that's something, but it doesn't make the other one obsolete, of course. Are there other school districts that you pay attention to to kind of look and see if they've, you know, made mistakes or doing the right thing? Have they come to mind? Who would that be? Who would you compare yourself with?
Well, I meet with a lot of school districts, actually. I had a meeting invitation for a Google Hangout on this Thursday with school districts from the southeast part of the state. And this is technology integrationists and technology directors. The shift in this area has been to Macs more and more. So I could say Macs or Chromebooks. We've seen some Chromebook shifts as well. And that's a cost solution. I would look at Farmington High School. I would look at Eden Prairie. I would look at Minnetonka. I would look at Rochester. Look at even some of the smaller districts between here and Rochester when we look at, gosh, I forget, Plainview and Plainview, Elgin, Millville, they're going all Mac, you know, and they're a small little district, and it's the functionality piece that they're looking for. The other big driving factor here is the staff preference. If we would have seen in our survey results that, you know, even 50/50, we have a big conversation, then 60/40 preferring PCs, we would have been likely staying with PCs. But we see that the opposite way, that we have a pretty strong preference for Mac and a pretty strong preference for laptops. And so we, as a department, don't have the manpower to manage an individual choice for every teacher, and that's not a very efficient system in terms of how people work together. But we can honor what the majority say. And I know, Amy, you brought up who didn't take the survey. We communicated the survey as much as we possibly could in terms of, you know, a full email that said, here's the schedule of dates in your building, an email on the day of to say, I'll be in your building today, and here's the meeting time, please come, an email after that day to say, here's the survey again. The survey was included in the presentation with a QR code and a link, an email out after the fact, an email after I'd been to all of the buildings to say, I've met with all of our buildings, here's the survey. If you still haven't filled it out, here's the link again. Lots of effort to get responses. And so I can't make people respond, but I can give a lot of opportunity. And so I think that opportunity was there, and I'm more than hesitant, I'm actually, we'll leave it at that, more than hesitant to say, to predict or to guess what people who didn't fill out the survey would have said, because there was the chance multiple times.
Thank you.
Excellent. Amy?
He always reminds me to do that. Thank you.
For the friendlies.
So I'm still thinking this all through, and I am very supportive, but I just, I have questions.
Yeah, that's fair.
So what is the sense, and maybe there isn't any concern at all, but that the students' are very portable computers, that they would be used as personal computers that, in people in the staff home? Is that something we care about or not, or...
As long as you're within the acceptable use of our technology, I think that is fine. We have an acceptable use policy. And I think another Matt Hillman quote that we hear all the time, we trust our staff with children, and we will trust them with a computer. So I think I am not concerned about personal use on laptops. Like I say, within that acceptable use policy that we already have in place.
So if they kept their, you know, school-issued computer at home, for whatever reason, because they did most of their extra work at home, that's all part of the use of the computer, and that would all be okay?
Yep.
All right?
Well, Amy, I think the other thing, though, is that with the, even with the iPad, if you remember when we first rolled this out, staff got the iPad a full year ahead of time, and we tried to keep very basic expectations. And one of the expectations was, because it was the first portable device that people had, if you were here at school working, the iPad needed to be here with you at school. And I think that that's another reasonable expectation, that on days that you're here working, the computer's with you.
I'm sorry, I misinterpreted that.
And I think that that I don't worry about. And in terms of, you know, we do have an acceptable use policy that governs, I do trust our staff to make those decisions. But we also have to be real that there are some cases where if people were to not follow the acceptable use policy, we do have processes that we can use to correct that behavior and work through it. So I do believe that whether you have a portable computer or you have a desktop computer that's A-fixed, there are still people who might use their school computer for personal use. And again, as long as it stays within the con... And I do agree wholeheartedly, I think we get into some of these pieces. But we have to remember that every day, we have a world-class staff that we trust our own most treasured resource with. And so if I trust people with kids, I feel I can trust them with a computer. And I have said that over and over again. And I really mean it, because we need to trust and empower our staff to have the tools that they need. And from time to time, people are human beings, mistakes are made. We address those mistakes and move forward.
Our current policy does actually allow for personal use of district technology resources as long as they are outside of the work time.
Margaret?
Sir?
I too, like Amy, I'm just, the wheels are spinning. So I'm assuming that you would have the ability to remote swipe a laptop if it was stolen or something?
Yep.
Okay. Does it come with physical protections, like the kids' iPads do? Some cases?
No. No, it does not come with a case.
Okay.
So we would need staff to be responsible with their laptops.
Okay.
I think that is possible.
Okay.
And yes, we would be able to erase it and lock it down if it were lost or stolen.
Okay.
And we would provide locks for anyone who would like one. A lock needs to affix to the laptop. You still can unlock it from it. So you basically have kind of like a little, like you see in labs, computer labs sometimes, a little cable that locks to the actual computer. That would be on a desk if people wanted it, and particularly for those if they're going to leave it at school most of the time.
Yeah. I see college kids will do that, and then just bike cable their laptop to their furniture.
Whatever.
Yeah. Take the laptop, you take the bunk bed, too. So my other question, I'm going to open Pandora's Box here. Sooner or later, are we going to be talking about laptops for students?
I don't know.
Sooner rather than later, or...
It's not on the horizon.
Because I know a lot of schools are doing that now.
Yeah, I think that we need to be really, I think what you're seeing is schools are going to, there are more schools going to Chromebooks for students. And while they look very much like a laptop, they do not have the same capacity as a laptop. And we've chosen at this point for the next several years, the iPad as our student device. And if you recall, one of the things that we did to mitigate the issue of the keyboard component is that we did purchase pods of keyboards that were distributed this fall, I believe, or even last, a year ago, January, to where students do not... And I've been in classrooms regularly observing, and there was one particular day that was really instructive for me, where I was in a high school English classroom, where when you looked, kids had all sorts of problems. I saw some kids working on Google Docs on their phone. They were thumb typing. I saw some kids with their iPad, and they were using the glass keyboard just as fast as most of us in this room would type. And then I saw others who had, were getting keyboards from the classroom tote and using... And what I think the key thing there is that that is giving personalization to the student in what works best for you and how to get your work done.
Okay.
And I even saw some students highlighting or using a stylus or using their finger to interact with the same material in that handwritten fashion. So what we've chosen at this point for students is the iPad, which is a very robust tool. The difference is when you're an instructor and you're preparing the materials for students to use, I believe that's where the shift occurs, where you still need that little bit more oomph of a traditional computer operating system.
Okay.
Because at one point, I thought we all have iPads and be fine.
Yeah.
But the fact is, it just has not caught up there quite yet.
The touchscreen of the iPad is, I think at this point, irreplaceable for a student device. We can have some conversations about that. If I could know that our practice would be transformed in a powerful way that would impact student learning, I would do everything I possibly could to say, we should do this. But I don't, I don't actually see that with a laptop. This was reiterated in our Admin Professional Development today, a quote about, I have one written on my whiteboard that says, "Do not confine your children to your own learning for they were born in a different time." And it was a similar quote this morning that said, you know, our kids are growing, their childhood and the way that they work is different than the way that we have worked. And as opposed to having them conform to our ways, we should be learning and conforming to their ways, because those are going to be the future ways. And so I think the laptop conversation for students, you know, if that were something that we saw down the road that could change our practice for the better and revolutionize what we're doing, we would go for that. Right now, I don't see that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think that's also the power of leasing equipment, is that you can have those decision points in time. Throughout a lot of our adoptions, we've talked about different checkpoints. And when you are in a lease situation where you're planning a lease, you are able to have a number of those different touchpoints where if the conversation is different, you're able to make that move. Where if you're in a purchase environment, you may have to wait for the exact right moment in time, you know, to be able to make it cost-effective.
Thank you.
Other questions board members have? No? Okay. I just wanted to thank you, Kim, because I just think, you know, this presentation is excellent, and I really appreciate what you always do is really look at the challenges. And in my view, you have great, you and your staff have great credibility with me. And I'm glad that you talked about a number of the areas where you've really had to address some major transformations, and you've done it extremely well. And I think that you do so much pre-planning, which helps. But then we've also seen when you have to make game time decisions when things are happening, you have the fortitude and the ability to do that. So I am really, really comfortable with this decision, and in large part because of just the depth that you've presented it to us and how this will roll out. So if there's no other questions, then our next board meeting on April 10th, we would be approving the lease. So in the meantime, if there's questions that board members have, for Kim, you think you know how to get to her, and I know you'll be very responsive to those questions. So, thank you. Okay. So our next presentation is actually, presenter's right here. Dr. Hillman and board member Rob Hardy will present an update on their trip to Menominee Falls.
And present might be an overstatement. We're going to just simply share with you some of the experiences that we had, because we did have a very great formal presentation last fall. Remember when we had our first group go to Menominee Falls? And I want to be just really clear, too. Menominee Falls is about 20 miles from Milwaukee. It's not a trip we would normally make. We try to limit that kind of piece to in-state travel. However, we did have a generous grant from Northfield Promise and HCI to fund our teams to go. In its entirety, everything was paid for by Northfield Promise and HCI, because Menominee Falls is really connected through what's called the Strive Network, which also surrounds the Collective Impact Project that Northfield Promise is a part of. So Rob and I were a part of the team of nine who trucked across, I think it was Highway 94, all the way to Milwaukee. And Rob put up with me in a car for four hours there and four hours back, so he should have a break. But I had an opportunity to go, as well as Rob. Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Grace Hansen attended. High School Industrial Technology Teacher Mark Waitala. Sibley Instructional Coach Tanya Will. Greenville Park Instructional Coach Diane Torberson. Middle School Health Instructor Dan Reskraff. Director of Human Resources Molly Wieselmann. And Director of Finance Val Murdestorf were able to attend. We did not have a Bridgewater representative, because they had parent-teacher conferences on the Thursday night, and were not able to get anyone to be able to step away from that. Though they did have representatives. Zinger Hansen, if you remember, went last fall. So that, just to give you a sense, we try to have a very wide-ranging, wide-ranging group of folks looking at this approach from a number of different lenses. What I want to be really clear is that I think it certainly could be construed of, we're looking at Menominee Falls as some kind of new program or some silver bullet to solve whatever our next issue is. And I could not tell you that how much, it is not a program of what they're doing. The team that came back last fall said, it's a mindset, and that's very true. So you wouldn't see, if we were to consider some of the approaches that they're using, you wouldn't see any kind of massive, you know, rollout or public relations program to talk about, because the fact is, it's simply talking about some minor tweaks about how we do business, because frankly, we are doing almost all of the same things that Menominee Falls is doing. They just have a little bit different way of doing it, and there's a couple of tweaks we could do to make our practice that much more effective. And I just want to give you just a couple of highlights of what I see, and then Rob is going to jump in, and we're going to tag-team this together. We spent eight hours in a car, so we can finish each other's sentences at this point. We did have an opportunity to visit classrooms at all levels. So we had a chance to visit classrooms at the elementary level, we had a chance to visit classrooms at the middle school level, and at the high school level in a variety of subject areas. We also had a chance to learn directly from their, the administrators on the team got a chance to learn directly from their administrators about the organizational structure and practices that support the foundation of this kind of mindset. While teaching staff had a chance to work with another group of teachers who talked more specifically about how they implement it in their classroom. And so the couple of key things that you might remember from the fall, the term PDSA, and that stands for Plan, Do, Study, Act. This was very apparent that this is integrated into just how they think about things. So if they're considering a change in curriculum, they're using the Plan, Do, Study, Act model to guide that. If they're, if students are, we had saw kindergarten students who were able to talk to us about the Plan, Do, Study, Act in terms of their math lesson for that week. So whether you're a kindergartner or you're a high school physics teacher, you are using a very similar strategy to couch what you're, how you're planning and how you know how you're progressing towards your goals. I think a couple of pieces that I think were the most effective immediately were their commitment to what they call plus delta. In my world, we call it a SWOT analysis, the, you know, the strengths, the weaknesses, those kinds. But they are, in fact, they did it with us.[1773.28] At the end of a, uh, at, at the end of one of the training modules, they would say to us, "Let's do our plus delta." "Okay, this group, what did you think went well?" People would rattle off, "Oh, here's what really went well." Okay. They go around the room, everybody gets to talk about what, well, all right, what didn't go, what could we change? It's not what didn't go well, it's what could we change to make this better the next time? Again, just that little tweak from looking at it from a weakness or a challenge, or sometimes I call them an opportunity to talking it about just looking at it from what could we do to change to make our product better the next time? And when we saw, when we saw people doing that, it was very authentic. And again, we're not talking about the need to purchase some brand new system or whatever. This is just simply how we reframe the questions to ourselves in a manner that just begets that continuous improvement that, uh, the seminar was titled. The other couple of pieces I think were really important is that Menominee Falls is not a perfect place. They have a charismatic leader who I have tremendous respect for immediately followed on her, her on Twitter, Dr. Pat Greco, um, very focused on student achievement, very focused on understanding that the adults in the building are key in student achievement. Um, and that making sure that what they are, um, their voice is heard and that they have a say in how things roll, so to speak. So really a very charismatic leader, but she's also really gotten buy-in from everyone. They actually even have a board policy about continuous improvement because they want to make sure that if there's an election changeover that there'd actually have to be an intentional action by the board to go in a different direction. They want to institutionalize it at that level. That's pretty powerful, um, if you think about it. In addition, uh, they really focused on how feedback loops are essential. And they had a whole variety of different feedback loops, but if I were to say one, and it goes back to what was said this past fall as well, the power of student feedback. And they are doing the plus delta, the strengths and challenge, or whatever you want to call it, with students. Most of the time, every 10 to 15 days, usually at the end of every unit, at the end of a unit, they're asking students, "Hey, what went well, you know, for you in this unit? What could I do better the next time? What could I change the next time to make this more effective for you?" Now, after having done it for a few years, this, the teachers now know, "Well, I know the students are going to say, 'Have us play more games.'" So sometimes I'll just say, "That's not what we can say right now," which is perfectly appropriate and what we had heard. And I think the key thing is that it is, they are not perfect. Not perfect at all. And they'll be the first to tell you that. And it's implemented at a variety of levels of effectiveness. People who are following, they're textbook for the model. And others who are saying, "You know what? I'm still figuring out how this really works in my area." But all of them felt empowered to implement it in a way that worked for them. One gentleman said, uh, during one of our classrooms, "I do it like, just like everybody else. I do it my own way." Yet they had the very clear framework. So I thought that was really, really, um, powerful. Um, those are the, the real key pieces that I've taken away. I think we had some discussions with folks on the team about some ways that we might be able to adopt a handful of the mindsets or practices on a pilot basis. Um, you know, next year in terms of even just a couple of things with some PLCs to teach them some different terminologies and those kinds of things. Um, so some very basic pieces that we can use to start just changing some of the discussion. And trade-offs of how we could do that in the plus delta strategy. What could we do to make some of those things better? So those are my initial thoughts and Rob, I, I know you have many as well.
Yeah, well, actually Matt gave a very thorough summary of that. It was fun being there with Matt because he's an extroverted guy and he was like, we were in this gigantic auditorium and he was sitting down in a different area and a question would be asked and the first voice you'd hear was Matt answering the question. He's, he's the top student. The, um, it was really interesting because, you know, we spent the second day in a seminar or a symposium on continuous improvement and it was like a management symposium and that, you know, maximize performance. And that's not really my kind of thing. And there was a, we started off with a role-playing exercise that was about making widgets and I thought, "Education, this, this doesn't go together." But the principles that emerged were more about communicating with each other and cooperating with each other and valuing other people's contributions to things. And it was basics like that that just happened to work for management and work for education. So I ended up kind of buying into it, even though it's not my thing really. But, you know, I needed to stretch myself, like being eight hours in the car with a basketball fan and things like that. So, I mean-
He's not talking about Mary Hansen.
So, you know, I wrote down some quotes like, "The basic idea is creating a culture of care and service." I mean, that is not something I disagree with. And this is not chasing isolated initiatives and hoping something helps. It's not chasing after, what was the quote here? "Not chasing after the next shining thing." So it's not saying, "Teachers, here's something we're going to do differently and here's a new curriculum you're going to work with," but just creating this culture. So it, um, and I think it can be done in a lot of different ways and there's a lot of we, I mean, I think Matt and people who are going to have to work on implementing these things um, through the system or pulling things together so that they work as a system. I have a lot of good ideas for doing that. Uh, what was I going to say? This is why I should be like Noel and write everything down. What was I going to say, Matt?
Um, I think you're going to talk about shout-outs. Were you going to talk about that?
Oh, yeah, that's right. The am- the amazing thing is, I mean, th- they're trying to create this really great and it's succeeding, I think, in creating a really great environment for their students. But it's, but they're also really proud of the fact that they are like the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel is that the newspaper has ranked them like one of the top workplaces in the Milwaukee area. So it's a great place to work and it's because everybody values the contribution that everyone's making and they're part of every evaluation is not just what you need to do or what, it's always, "What can I do for you as well?" And "Who are other people who are helping you out, making you better?" So there's sort of these networks of care for each other. And I found that, you know, even though it's, a lot of it was couched in this kind of management, um, jargon, it was actually really kind of, it felt good too. So.
And, you know, they used a, you know, we have obviously our SIP plans with our SIP plan goals. That's how we do our approach. They use more of what they call a scorecard approach that's very integrated into what they, that's part of their feedback loops. Um, we, we may not need to go to the scorecard approach. The, the point is, do you have a goal? What's your goal? Is the goal clear? Do you know what strategy you're going to use to try to get there? Do you have a clear understanding of how you're going to evaluate the strategies that you were going to use to, to get there? And do you have the courage to make changes? You know, when it's necessary to do so. And I think that that's just another piece of that kind of management jargon is they use a lot of scorecards that you would see. It's very, eh, the model comes out of healthcare. I know this is, Margaret, I know that this is your, your language. Uh, when the student group who really has been influential for Menominee Falls starts talking that way. Um, so I think that the important piece is it is a, it's a holistic organizational approach uh, that really fo- I think sometimes when we talk about student achievement, we talk about we got, you know, we're going to focus directly on kids, which of course we're going to focus directly on kids, but sometimes I think we believe that we have to sacrifice the working conditions or the kind of s- s- culture that we have to get there. And we've always maintained that that is, that it's not a mutually exclusive concept, that you can do both. Um, we've never applied to be one of the top workplaces. Maybe we should. And as we move forward, I think that piece, that culture of care for everyone, whether it's a visitor to the building, whether it's people who are working there on a daily basis, whether it be parents, students or whatever, that the point is that when people don't care how much you know until they know you hear that old saying, that was pretty evident. And, you know, because I've seen some of these, what I call dog and pony shows before, I know some of the tricks. And so the restrooms were located in the cafeteria, right? And I went to the restroom and I, kids were in the, in the cafeteria. And so I stopped and talked to the cafeteria supervisors. And I said, "So, do they only put this big, you know, dog and pony show on when a bunch of people come in from the outside and to a person?" I asked four different people, four different times. Who a person says, "Nope. This is how we do things." And I would ask them some follow-up questions. And that's where the authenticity came in. Um, as they were supervising the cafeteria, I'd be able to ask them, "So, you know, how has it gone for you?" "No, it took me a couple of years to get there." "How long did it take for people to stop complaining about it?" "Two years." Um, "How long did it, do you feel you're really effective?" "Well, in this one area, I'm very effective. In this one class, I'm really effective at using this, but in this other area, I'm still working on it." So it isn't, you know, something that they just put up when people come. It's an actual, and if, if you've ever been to those things, normally if you ask people, they can say, "Yeah, it's not really how we do it. That's how they say we do it." But they do it that way. And you could pick random people out and ask them those questions. And there's no better place to ask people's honest opinion than supervising the cafeteria because they're going to be really straight with you on it. And it was very, we'd ask the kids too. I'd ask a seventh grade student, "So is this what you do? How often do you do this?" They were doing a goal-setting day. "Oh, yeah, we do this about, usually about what?" "At the beginning of every unit." "So maybe once every six weeks." You ask a kindergartner, eh, eh, they, they were the ones, the one kindergartner we asked, "So can you show us this data binder?" "No, we're not supposed to show you that. We're going to just only show you this today." It was very, I mean, they were very clear in their instructions, what they were supposed to do and how they were supposed to share things with us. But every person we talked to, whether it was a kid in kindergarten or someone supervising, they had a similar enough answer to say, "Okay, they're on the right track." And what's energizing about it is the fact that we are doing almost all of those things. They just have a little bit more direct and tighter alignment up and down. Sometimes I feel like some of our continuous improvement, I think this is changing as we've gone to a more detailed strategic plan, is a little bit, eh, eh, it just, you know, goes along a path that winds sometimes. And that's okay. But I think that if we really want to get that direct achievement, it's about getting all of those factors aligned. It the, the piece that I want to share, we asked Molly and Val to come along because one of the most intriguing things to me was it's the first time I've ever heard folks talk about the, how they include the district office in the same exact kind of planning. And so when the finance director talked or when the HR director talked or the, in fact, the place where they've had the most innovation in the district, they will tell you, is the Buildings and Grounds Department. And the Buildings and Grounds Manager is so proud to say how much money their continuous improvement approach has saved the district because he says, "I know that goes directly to buying more stuff for kids." And so it's this entire system approach. It's not just about a person in the classroom or a person in an office at a building. It's everyone working together. And I think everybody came back, you know, pretty energized about how these simple mindset shifts and a few different templates in terms of to help guide our thinking can create this really strategic alignment. So, um, I could, we could go on and on. And you know that I can go on and on. So I will stop. Yes, that's right. I'm a good conversationalist, or so I'm told. I'm not shy.
Do board members have some follow-up questions or comments? Ellen?
So I wanted to jump on one of the comments that I, and I can't remember if it was Dr. Hillman or Rob or Dr. Hardy that said this. Um, but you're talking about, both of you, I think, said this is a mindset piece. And then one of you talked, maybe it was Dr. Hillman, about adopting, potentially adopting a process that we could pilot. So I think social change is hard and I can recognize that you, you see that we're doing many of these things, but somehow we're not doing quite what they're doing, or we wouldn't have had sent two groups all the way there. So how does one pilot a mindset?
So what, what I will get, that, that's a very fair point. And I think that a mindset i- is, is like a, uh, a fire catching. And I think that if we can help a, a small group of people to begin with feel confidence in some of the mindset shifts and maybe just using a handful of different tools to guide their, the intentionality of their conversations, it's, and I don't like using the, but fire is what came to my mind tonight. So, you know, it's that piece of getting, you know, really fanning those flames of excitement about what you can see. And I'll give one concrete example that one of the teachers and I talked about. Currently, we have PLCs do, uh, weekly minutes. PLCs turn in minutes every week. And we asked, one of the things that was part of our, uh, teacher development and evaluation plan, separate from PLCs, but still integrated, um, is we ask students for feedback once a year. Here. And actually, I think many people will, will tell us that student feedbacks actually, and research is supporting this, that it's one of the most effective and authentic ways for us to get feedback as teachers in the classroom, regardless of age. Um, some might say in middle school, we, they take a little detour, but, you know, we work on that. But the point is, is that if we were just to make one simple shift and just try it with a couple of PLCs that, you know, this is just one example. I want to be really clear. This is just responding to your question. It's not what we're going to do, it's just an idea we had. What if we said that we're no longer going to require you to do the PLC minutes each week because that's an account, that was set up, if you remember, the PLC minutes were set up as an accountability mechanism. But rather than doing that, we ask you to survey your students in this plus delta strategy four times a year. Just for example, that, maybe it's a, some, more than once, you know, but less than every week, of course. Would that trade-off be good? And the discussion that the teaching staff, eh, that I was talking with about said, "That trade-off would absolutely be worth it." Because that time that we would save as a PLC in terms of, you know, keeping those minutes, you still have the accountability of having more than one student survey. And we'd still expect people to do reflection because that's a key part of it. But that's an example of just a little bit of a, an accountability mindset shift that really costs nothing. It's actually probably better for kids. It's probably better for the people on the PLCs. Um, and we take away that, um, that accountability piece that feels like I'm, I'm needing to explain what I did during my PLC. Instead, we're focusing it to what we all want PLCs to do, which is to drive key academic or social and emotional results. That's just one example of how, if you were to have a couple of PLCs try that for the year and say, "Hey, here's what we think, here's, how would this go? How can we change this in this way?" Report out to their staff colleagues. Now you open it up to more people and before you know it, that could be the common practice. So that, I think that's how you spread the mindset change or the culture change is by getting some local advocates to say, "Hey, this works much better than the old way. Let's try this." And I think you roll it out in that. And this is a way where we can do that. There are times we can't pilot things. Kim has made a very good point about how, why going to laptops for everyone at the same time makes organizational sense. But in this particular case, this is where those smaller pilot pieces make the best organizational sense, in my opinion.
And they were also very, they were also very clear that they started this when Dr. Greco got there in 2011. So this is their sixth year of implementing it. And they were clear that it was still an ongoing process. So, I mean, but you saw huge enthusiasm and, you know, the enthusiasm wasn't at those levels of, I mean, this is why we didn't go in 2012 because they hadn't, you know, we haven't heard of them because they were still building the enthusiasm. So I think, you know, that, that's been a six-year process. So it's not something you want to just say, "This is how we're going to do things," but build it slowly.
Any last questions or comments? I just want to, um, yeah, just, i- it's interesting to hear, um, you know, Dr. Hillman and Rob and then the, the crew that was here, the, the staff that had gone, really sharing many of the same things and being so energized and excited about it. So.
And we are setting up a follow-up. So, um, I'm going to be sending out a piece to the group that just went. Uh, we'll be setting up a follow-up to debrief in the next couple of weeks. And then at some point, we'll bring both groups together uh, to have that particular dialogue about next steps. And we would be remiss if we didn't thank Zach Pruitt uh, and HCI, Northfield Promise, and XACT, and all of the organization of registering us and more importantly, had the money to send us. So because again, that's not the normal kind of thing we would do with our staff development budget. Well, we were able to do that with the good grace of Zach and, and the rest of the crew. So thanks to Zach publicly. Thank you, Zach. And, uh, it was really a great experience.
When we just want to thank Rob as well for representing what we know. He represented, uh, the school board of Northfield very well.
There were lots of different school districts there and I was the only school board member, so.
Excellent. Okay, great. So that covers our, um, items for discussion. Um, we'll now move forward. We have, um, two items for individual action this evening. The first is the 2017 Operating Capital and Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Budget. Since this is an item for individual action, is there a motion to approve the 2017-18 Operating Capital and Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Budgets? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Any discussion or questions? We saw this presentation last week, Margaret, or last?
Just capitalizing what, what Kim had said, the lease on the laptops then would fall under the capital levy? Or the lease levy?
Um, it'll fall under the capital budget, which, eh, the two funding sources that would be, would not be lease levy. It would actually come from a combination of the operating capital and the capital levy. I think that's a fair way to say it, Val.
Okay.
Those funds get commingled.
Okay.
Thank you. Good question. Any other questions or comments?
Okay.
Um, Amy?
So approval tonight of the operating capital basically is paving the way for the computers?
Right. So I think if you think about it, the computer lease is one portion, it's a relatively small portion, actually, of the, oh, it's not to minimize. It's a significant amount of money. But when you think about the entire district capital budget, it's one component of that. What this does is it authorizes the funds, whether you approve the lease or not, we're going to purchase some classroom computers next year. And if we don't approve the lease, we'd use it to purchase computers. And if we do approve the lease at the next meeting, um, we would use those funds to, to pay for it. Val, looks like she has something she wants to say here too.
Nope. I was just going to emphasize that it's the either or. We either had to buy desktops or the lease. And so the, the amount was basically the same for next year. So that amount is in the budget and then whatever the decision is then. So that amount is in the budget, and then whatever the decision is, then we'll determine our direction.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Let's just thank Val for her great work, and Jim Colseth, and Kim, and all the people, Mary Grace Hansen, all the people who come together to put the capital process earlier than we've had it before because the key thing is after tonight, people can get started really on a lot of the projects, not all of them, but they get started on a lot of them. So, great job.
So we have a motion and a second, and no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. Second item for individual action, again, based on the presentation at our past board meeting, additional FTE allocation for 2017-18. Is there a motion to approve the addition of a 1.0 FTE seventh-grade health teacher at Northfield Middle School and increase the district's contingency fund by a 1.0 FTE? Moved by Noel, is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions, discussion, comments, board members? I just had one comment, last board meeting, we talked a lot about the social-emotional learning piece within that seventh-grade health curriculum, but we also know that there's some real good work going to be done as far as career, career and college readiness, and I think that the two just fit so well, and it's just such a wonderful opportunity, a perfect time to be communicating a lot of that with middle school students. So we, we kind of talked a lot about the, we touched on it, but I just wanted to just mention that's one very important aspect, I think, and.
And I think that the key thing is by adding an additional grade level to our health curriculum, we're able to spread that health curriculum standards over three grades as opposed to two, which frees up the instructional time to input, to include both the social-emotional learning standards that we, if you read the Star Tribune over the weekend, there was an article in there about how Forbes study social-emotional learning kinds of skills, the top thing that hiring folks are looking at in terms of what they call those soft skills in the Forbes piece. But it also allows us to integrate more, in a more intentional way, some of the great work we've done with the career and college areas. We know the CTE career fair that we have coming up in May and a number of other pieces, we've had to integrate that into different areas. Now we have a clear home for it in the middle school that helps set them up for their career cho, or their class choices when they come to the high school.
Okay. Excellent. Rob?
I just have a question about the, well, the contingency fund, that's part of this, right?
Yes.
If you're getting an extra 1.0 FTE, that's going to be chopped up, right?
Correct.
And you said it's usually in overloads for teachers who are already teaching the subject, they take it? So, I mean, how much can you chop up one FTE? How much is an overload? I mean, what part of the FTE is an overload? I'm just wondering how far one goes.
There's, you've heard of the term that when we talk about legislation, we talk about biennial math, well, there's what we call an FTE math as well, in terms of if you think about it, generally at the secondary where overloads happen, almost always, they happen at the secondary level. One FTE could typically be divided into five different instructional sections. So one additional FTE would really allow us to add five sections across the secondary schools. That's how we do the general calculation, and we can't do a perfect analysis because, of course, the way that overloads work in our teaching contract is it's dependent upon a couple of different factors, where you currently are in the salary schedule, how many days you're going to have the overload, because sometimes an overload might be for just a semester, it might be for just, might be for a full year. In some of our middle school classes, it could be every other day for a full year. So when we do that calculation, it's based upon where you're at multiplied by the factor that's in the contract, and then taken into consideration for the number of days that you're going to teach. So Val has basically done a rolling average, is probably the best way to say it, for the budgeting purposes. So while no two overloads cost exactly the same, the fact is that this is what we, is our best estimate of how much that would cost us. And we would get five additional sections, which is pretty significant. We can do a lot, addressing of a lot of things with five additional sections.
Great, great question, Rob. Any other questions or comments before we approve the motion? Okay, just as a reminder, we've got a motion and a second to approve the addition of a 1.0 FTE seventh-grade health teacher and a 1.0 FTE to the district's contingency fund. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to items, we will move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there was just one, actually, there were no items in the table filed to be added to the consent grouping. So is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Noel, is there a second? Second by Jeff. Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just one item for information, we have solidified the date for the school board work session to continuing discussing, discussing the next steps of the master facility plan. That date is confirmed at Wednesday, April 19th, 5:30 to 7:30 PM, I believe, denoted in the high school media center. Okay? And I just want to thank everyone's willingness to devote some extra time to this important discussion, so I was really glad that we were able to find the date of Wednesday, April 19th. Future meetings, regular school board meetings will be Monday, April 10th, and Monday, April 24th at 7:00 PM in the high school media center. So with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Noel, is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.